Good afternoon. Mr. Clerk, please let's call this regular meeting of the Providence City Council to order.
Council President Matos.
Present.
Councilwoman Anthony.
Present.
Councilwoman Castillo.
Present.
Councilman Correa.
Present.
Councilman Espinal.
Present.
Councilwoman Harris.
She's muted.
Dialed in with this. Is that you, Councilwoman Harris? Are you dialed in on your phone? I don't have audio from you. Hold on, hold on.
There she goes.
Go ahead.
Present.
Okay, great. Councilman Iglesias.
Present.
Councilwoman Kerwin.
Present.
Councilwoman LaFortune.
Present.
Councilwoman Miller.
Present.
Councilman Narducci.
Yeah.
Councilwoman Ryan.
Present.
Councilman Salvatore.
Present.
Councilman Taylor.
Here.
You have 14 present, you have none absent, you have a quorum.
Thank you. The invocation is gonna, will be given by Councilwoman Nerba LaFortune.
Thank you, Lord, for everything that you have done. Thank you for bringing us here together again as we embark another day, another meeting to make decisions about, for our community. We ask you to provide us with guidance, provide us with leadership, so that we can acknowledge all the needs within our individual communities and so that we can create policies and initiatives to protect the residents of Providence. And I also ask for you to provide us with grace, empathy, and also to bless so many people who've been affected by this pandemic, the people in the nursing home, the people working in the nursing home, our healthcare workers, our doctors, nurses, our frontline workers, our police officers, our firemen, our service workers, those who are working in our restaurants and working in our supermarkets or big box stores. We ask you to protect them, protect their families. We pray, amen.
Amen.
The pledge of allegiance is gonna be led by Councilwoman Rachel Miller.
I pledge allegiance to the class of the United States of America.
I stand on the God, indivisible, to liberty and justice for all. Thank you. I would like to ask the solicitor to please put on the record the legality of this meeting and why we're having this meeting via telecall, video call. So solicitor, can you please give your opinion on the record?
Yes, per Executive Order of Governor, Governor Raimondo, it is permissible, under the Open Meetings Act, to hold this meeting electronically.
Thank you. Mr. Clerk.
Approval of minutes. Item three, Journal of Proceeding, number 10, the regular meeting of the City Council held April 16th, 2020.
Madam President.
Leader Ryan.
Move approval of item three on a voice vote.
Madam President, second at motion.
Motion has been made on second to approve item number three on a voice vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
P眾, may I have it?
Appointments by his honor, the mayor, item four, communication from his honor, the mayor, dated March 11th, 2020, and to honorable members of the city council that pursuant to section 302B of the Providence Home Rule Charter of 1980, as amended, section 502.1 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Providence, and public law chapter 45 to 50, sections 1 through 31, passed in 1987. He is this day reappointing Christopher J. Marcella of 188 Benefit Street, Providence, Rhode Island, 02906, as a member of the Down City Design Review Committee, for a term to expire on January 31st, 2023.
Receive.
Item five, communication from his honor, the mayor, dated March 11th, 2020, informing the honorable members of the city council that pursuant to section 302B of the Providence Home Rule Charter of 1980, as amended, and public law chapter 45 to 50, sections 1 through 31, passed in 1987, and Executive Order 2016-1, he is this day appointing Michelle Walker of 153 P Street, Providence, Rhode Island, 02907, to the Bike and Pedestrian Advisory Commission, for a term to expire on March 30th, 2023.
Receive.
Ordinance is second reading.
Madam President.
Leader Ryan.
Motion to ask the clerk to read items six and seven into the record and pass for the second time on a roll call vote.
Second at motion.
The motion has been made on second to ask the clerk to read items six and seven, and both items are gonna be passed for the second time on a roll call vote. Mr. Clerk.
Item six, Council President Matos, Councilwoman Iglesias, Correa, Narducci, Councilwoman Harris, and Councilman Taylor, an ordinance in accordance with chapter 21, section 19 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Providence entitled Capital Equipment Budget as Amended, $20 million master lease. Item seven, an ordinance in accordance with chapter 21, section 19, of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Providence entitled Capital Equipment Budget as Amended, $9 million master lease. Council President Matos.
Are you calling the roll already?
Yeah, sorry, I just.
Okay, alright.
Madam President.
Aye. Leader Ryan?
Yes, if there's no objection from the sponsors, I would like to be listed as a sponsor on item six and seven.
Got it.
Anybody else would like to be?
Can request, President.
Councilwoman Castillo.
Councilman Espinal as well, Madam President.
Councilman Espinal.
Thank you.
Request, Councilman Salvatore.
Okay. Mr. Clerk.
So noted, we've added Ryan Castillo Salvatore, the counselors, those four counselors, any other counselors? Council President Matos.
Aye.
Councilwoman Anthony.
Aye.
Councilwoman Castillo.
Aye.
Councilman Correa.
Aye.
Councilman Espinal.
Aye.
Councilwoman Harris.
Aye.
Councilman Iglesias.
Aye.
Councilwoman Kerwin.
Aye.
Councilwoman LaFortune.
Aye.
Councilwoman Miller.
Aye.
Councilman Narducci.
Aye.
Councilwoman Ryan.
Aye.
Councilman Salvatore.
Aye.
Councilman Taylor.
Aye.
You have 14 ayes and no nays. The several matters passed for the second time on a roll call vote. Presentation of.
Thank you.
Item eight, Council President Matos and Councilman Correa, an ordinance approving capital improvement plan for fiscal year 2021 through 2025.
Refer to committee on finance.
Item nine, Councilman Espinal, Councilwoman Anthony and Miller, an ordinance and amendment of chapter 27 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Providence entitled The City of Providence Zoning Ordinance, approved November 24th, 2014, as amended, to change certain texts in article 12 regarding the incinerator slash waste facility use category.
Refer to the committee on ordinance.
Item 10, Councilman Narducci, and I need to correct the record to remove Councilwoman Miller as a sponsor. She did not intend to be a sponsor of this item. So this is sponsored by Councilman Narducci only at this time, an ordinance and amendment of zoning ordinance section 1202, principal use standards, amending paragraph EE, compassion center slash cultivation center.
I'm here, Madam President, if I may.
Refer to committee on ordinance and Councilman Narducci.
Thank you. I was hoping to get support from my colleagues on this particular item. As we know in the past, what has happened in some of our neighborhoods is certain things, like rehab centers and stuff like that, get dumped into, you know, certain particular neighborhoods all in one. What this will do is give a three quarter mile radius of where they can, if you have a compassion center, they can't put another one within three quarters of a mile, which kind of extends out throughout the city. As we know, in the very near future, once the State House gets back, they're already looking to, okay, six new licenses. So again, I know we could talk about it more in committee, but I would really appreciate one of my colleagues moving forward on this particular item.
Thank you, Councilman.
Thank you.
Thank you. Presentation of resolutions, item 11.
Madam President.
Leader Ryan.
We're all gonna get through this together. I'd like to ask the clerk to read item 11 through 13 into the record and pass.
Second at, Madam President.
The motion has been made on second to ask the clerk to read the items 11 through 13, and these items will be passed on a roll call vote. Mr. Clerk.
Thanks, and I'll just take a moment to ask if people could mute themselves if they're not speaking, because the majority leader was interrupted a little bit during the motion. So thanks in advance. Council President Matos.
Do you want to read them first?
Oh, sorry. Council President Matos, Councilwoman Anthony, Councilman Correa, Espinal, and Councilwoman Miller, resolution supporting the expansion of SNAP benefits online and delivery services. Item 12, Council President Matos, Councilwoman Anthony, Councilman Correa, Espinal, and Councilwoman Miller, resolution requesting the city council denounce xenophobia and anti-Asian sentiment. Item 13, Councilwoman Espinal, Councilwoman Anthony, Councilman Salvatore, and Councilwoman Miller, resolution requesting an expansion to the notice requirements for major land development projects.
Anyone need to co-sponsor any items before we do the roll call?
Madam President.
I see, hands up. Councilwoman LaFortune, I go first, and then I'm going to Councilman Narducci. Councilwoman LaFortune?
If the sponsors don't oppose, I would like to sponsor items 11 to 13, please.
Another.
Co-sponsor.
Councilman Narducci.
Madam President, if no objections by sponsors, I would like to co-sponsor 11 and 12, please.
Not noted.
Council President, I would like to sponsor 11 and 13.
I just want to make sure I was clear that I said 11 through 13 and not 11 and 13. Okay.
Not noted. And Harris, Councilwoman Harris, was that all three as well?
Yes, thank you, Madam, Mr. Clerk.
Madam President.
Chairman Iglesias.
Yes, could I, before it's too late, could I co-sponsor items 10, 11, 12, and 13, please?
Mr. Clerk, can you make note of that? And Councilwoman Castillo also. Councilwoman Castillo.
Madam President, Councilman Salvatore here. If there's no objection, I'd like to co-sponsor items 11 and 12.
Madam President.
Councilwoman Kerwin.
I would like to co-sponsor 11 and 12 as well.
And I heard one more person.
Council President.
Leader Ryan.
Raise my hand. I would want to, with no exception from the sponsors, I would like to co-sponsor items 11 and 12.
So noted.
Any other?
Councilwoman Castillo, did you want to co-sponsor 11 through 13? Okay, thank you.
Yes. Yes. Alright, so, Mr. Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Council President Matos.
Aye.
Councilwoman Anthony. Councilwoman Castillo.
Aye.
Councilman Correa.
Aye.
Councilman Espinal.
Aye.
Councilwoman Harris.
Aye.
Councilman Iglesias.
Aye.
Councilwoman Kerwin.
Aye.
Councilwoman LaFortune.
Aye.
Councilwoman Miller.
Aye.
Councilman Narducci.
Aye.
Councilwoman Ryan.
Aye.
Councilman Salvatore.
Aye.
Councilman Taylor.
Aye.
You have 14 ayes, you have no nays. The several matters passed on a roll call vote. Item 14, reports from committee.
Leader Ryan.
Thank you. We have an amendment to item 14, and to make it easy for everyone on the call, I'd like to ask Councilman Salvatore if he could explain the, to our colleagues.
Thank you, Leader Ryan. Should the clerk read the amendment to the record prior to introduction of the amendment?
I'm gonna actually, sure, you can do that.
Yeah, sure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, Mr.
Can you please read item 14?
Into the record.
Okay, just the title of the ordinance requiring the Department of Public Works to refund taxpayers who were incorrectly charged late removal fees for garbage receptacles.
Madam President.
Councilman Salvatore?
Yes, at this time, I would like to offer an amendment to item number 14, in section two, strike, by striking the word 30 and replacing it with the term 45. Also, in section two, striking the number 30 and replacing it with the number 45. And in section three, striking the word 60 in line one and replacing it with the word 90. And the final amendment in section three, line one, striking the number 60 and replacing it with the number 90.
And it is my understanding, Madam President, that the word "acting" should also be struck from sections one and three in front of the word "director."
I believe those amendments were made in committee, correct?
Yes, they were.
That is correct.
My apologies.
So, a motion to.
We have a motion. Is that a second?
That was second, Madam President.
The motion was made by Councilman Salvatore, second by the majority leader, Mary Kay Harris, and is to make the amendment. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 P眾.
Madam President.
May I have it? Leader Ryan.
Motion to pass item 14 as amended for the first time on a roll call vote.
Second at motion, Madam President.
The motion was made on second to pass item number 14 for the first time, as amended on a roll call vote. Mr. Clerk.
Council President Matos.
Aye.
Councilwoman Anthony.
Aye.
Councilwoman Castillo.
Aye.
Councilwoman, Councilman Correa.
Aye.
Councilman Espinal.
Aye.
Councilwoman Harris.
Aye.
Councilman Iglesias.
Aye.
Councilwoman Kerwin.
Aye.
Councilwoman LaFortune.
Aye.
Councilwoman Miller.
Aye.
Councilman Narducci.
Aye.
Councilwoman Ryan.
Aye.
Councilman Salvatore.
Aye.
Councilman Taylor.
Aye.
You have 14 ayes and zero nays. The matter passes as amended for the first time on a roll call vote. Item 15, transmissive following with recommendation, the same be severally approved.
Leader Ryan.
Motion to ask the clerk to read items 15 and 16 into the record and pass on a roll call vote and refer back to Board of Contract and Supply.
Second at motion.
Motion has been made on second to ask the clerk to read the items 15 and 16 into the record, and those are gonna be called, gonna be passed on a roll call vote, and they will be referred back to the Board of Contract and Supply. Mr. Clerk.
Council President Matos.
You're reading the item.
Item 15, resolution authorizing approval of the following contract award by the Board of Contract and Supply in accordance with section 21-26A of the Code of Ordinances, WIOA Comprehensive Youth Program for Workforce Solutions in the amount of $1.3 million. Item 16, resolution authorizing approval of the following contract award by the Board of Contract and Supply in accordance with section 21-26A of the Code of Ordinances, LISC, for the policy office in the amount of $750,000.
Madam President. Call the roll. Leader Ryan?
Yes, I, I am not gonna support item 16 this evening, and I asked my colleagues to join me in voting no. This was heard in the Finance Committee, and there was some confusion in the discussion, but in short, for the benefit of my colleagues, this will be funded, a portion out of the mayor's contingency fund, and another portion of the funds will come from the public property funds, which were to be directed to fix our public schools. So basically, those funds are being scooped, if you will, combined with the mayor's contingency funds, and intended to fund a program that will retrofit private facilities for pre-K operation. Now, pre-kindergarten operation is, it's, those programs and the project has merit, but quite honestly, our city and our state are facing unprecedented financial challenges. This would be money coming out of our existing budget. We saw, we had a proposal before finance by our finance director, and he indicated that they will have a balanced budget, or they hope to have a balanced budget this fiscal year, but they'll be using rainy day dollars to do, to do so. I'm questioning our revenue streams through the end of this fiscal year, and I really feel as though I can't support this expenditure at this time, particularly paying, using funds that were intended, a portion of funds for our public schools to retrofit private operation. Thank you.
Madam President.
Any further discussion?
Madam President.
Chairman Iglesias, yeah?
This evening, I'll be supporting item 15, but I'm not going to support item 16. Actually, besides the eloquent job that the majority leader has done, I want to also add an additional aspect to it, is that out of the $750,000, about $160,000 is going to be paid to a private company, which, which will basically, their job is going to be dispersing the grants. And they're gonna actually be controlling the other $600,000, and they will be doing a grant program. First of all, we don't need to hire an independent company that kind of money. If we are gonna do a grant program, they could probably do it through the planning department if you are going to do it. But the company itself, that's not even what they do for a living. It's a really odd combination, this company, that they plan on hiring. And also, what was very disconcerting is that when you look at the face of the actual contract document, it didn't break down what this was. And we had to dive, do a deep dive into the conversation to find out that, the way it's presented, it looks like you're hiring a company for $750,000, but then as you get deeper into it, they have to basically, no, no, that's not what it is. We are getting a piece of that money, and now we're gonna be independently, you know, giving out free money and grants to, to private businesses throughout the city. Albeit, those private businesses are important, but what was concerning was there was also, and the city solicitor promised, there were no checks and balances in the contract. There was no auditing provision, and there was also no, it supposedly was going to be this ad hoc group of people who was going to take applications and determine who gets the money. The city solicitor for this evening supposed to amend this document, actually this contract, before the council received it, with those two elements. They promised they would. Clearly hasn't happened. What was very concerning was there was no audit provision, which means the city would be giving this private company $750,000 to dispense as they see fit, without any accounting measure for the city to find out what happened to the money. Solicitor did not add those elements to it, and the more, second piece, of course, was they were supposed to be a identified committee or board that would actually vet the applications and then dispense it, disperse it. One of the requests was that there should be at least a councilmatic position on that board, along with the administration position on that board, because it's imperative, that's all part of the checks and balances. So I, I'm voting against that this evening. I have the, if they could come back and recraft it correctly, with the appropriate financial controls in it, then I think it's, it's worth, has some value to it, and we should revisit it. But the way it works right now, if you vote for it tonight, you will be handing a private company $750,000 sight unseen, and you will never know what happens to it. So that is what's before you. So I urge my colleagues just to think, if you want to, need more information, maybe continue the matter if you want to, then we get some more conversation on it, or maybe we can get at least a contract amended with those accounts and controls in it. My concern is, as you know, in the past, these types of situations always cause issues, as we know, where money like this goes out, and then later on, we find out that the money wasn't utilized in the appropriate fashion. So I urge my colleagues to either do two things. One, vote no on at this time, or maybe we continue it, so at least the appropriate amendments get added. That's my suggestion. But in this present conation, I will be voting no. Thank you, Madam President.
Council President.
Councilwoman Anthony.
Yes, I would, I would like to make a motion to continue this item, so that we can have some of these questions answered.
And I would second that.
Can I ask, could I please ask Leader Ryan to withdraw the motion that she made to take the two items together?
I withdraw to combine items 15 and 16.
I'll take my second back.
Thank you.
Let's make a motion.
Now, I just wanna take the motions for item number 15. First, I will, I'll take that one from Leader Ryan, and I'll take the motion for 16 from Councilwoman Anthony. Leader Ryan, for item 15?
Motion to pass and a roll call vote, refer back to Board of Contract and Supply.
Second.
So now the roll call is gonna be for item number 15. Mr. Clerk, can you please take the roll call?
Council President Matos.
Aye.
Councilwoman Anthony.
Aye.
Councilwoman Castillo.
No.
Excuse me, this is item 16?
15, for item 15, we're doing, we're doing, we're doing them separate, 15, yeah.
Aye.
Councilman Correa.
Aye.
We have you as high.
Aye.
Councilman Espinal.
Aye.
Councilwoman Harris.
Aye.
Councilman Iglesias.
Aye, on 15.
Councilwoman Kerwin.
Aye.
Councilwoman LaFortune.
Aye.
Councilwoman Miller.
Aye.
Councilman Narducci.
Aye.
Councilwoman Ryan.
Aye.
Councilman Salvatore.
Aye.
Councilman Taylor.
Aye.
You have 14 ayes and zero nays. Item 15 passes on a roll call vote and will be referred back to the Board of Contract and Supply.
Councilwoman Anthony, for item number 16, what was your motion?
Yes, I would like to make a motion to continue with this item.
Madam President, I'll second that motion.
I will also second that, Councilman Espinal.
We will all second that.
Alright, so, we have a motion, has been made on second, to continue item number 16. All those in favor?
Madam President, Madam President Salvatore here.
Councilwoman Salvatore, yeah?
If I could just briefly add, you know, I want to thank the chairman and Leader Ryan for their comments. This, this speaks to the reasons why we need to thoroughly vet budgets in the Finance Committee, and specifically the mayor's budget and the city council budget. So it's my hope that, moving forward, the Finance Committee looks at both budgets thoroughly, so that these questions don't come up either in the middle of the fiscal year or as the fiscal year is winding down. So again, I think this speaks to an opportunity that we have, to again. we have to, again, vet the budgets in the Mayor's Office and the Council Office. I know we haven't done this traditionally. We've tried it in the past, but to the Chairman's point, these are taxpayer dollars, and we have a responsibility to vet the entire budget, which includes the Mayor's Budget and the City Council Budget. Thank you, Madam President.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Both, do I have it?
From the clerk's desk, item 17, petition from J. Joseph Baxter, State Court Administrator, dated March 12, 2020, submitting an easement to install 26 sidewalk security bollards on the Benefit Street sidewalk abutting the Leech Judicial Complex located on Assessor's Flat 12, Lot 119, 250 Benefit Street.
Received.
Madam President?
Chairman Andy Gliosi.
On item number 17, could we also ask that the court, besides installing the bollards, could they also be responsible for the sidewalk too, around the courthouse? I'm just saying, is that something that we could respectfully request? So, this way, they have control of it, and then the sidewalk breaks, so the bala gets broken, then they can just deal with it. I realize they're doing this for safety, security purposes, and this way they have a little, a greater ability to maintain that control. I don't know, I know it's a petition, but is that something that maybe the clerk can reach out to, or whoever is, and talk to them, say, would they consider doing that? This way, the courthouse can maintain the control of the surroundings. So, this is just a suggestion, Madam President. I don't know who would, because we're just receiving it.
Thanks. We're just receiving it, so I will ask the solicitor if he has an opinion about this item.
Council President, this item actually will end up, even though we receive the petition, it is gonna be.
Doesn't it go to Public Property? Doesn't it go to the Committee on Public Property?
To Public Works, actually. It should be referred to Public Works. Sorry.
All right. Then, in that case, I will need a motion. Actually, I can just refer to Public Work. Can we make the correction to refer to Public Work?
Yes, so noted.
And then, Madam President, then I'll just ask the Chairperson of Public Works if they would consider having that conversation with the petitioner, that's all.
So noted, Chairman.
Thank you.
Item 18, petition from Jennifer Hawkins, Executive Director, One Neighborhood Builders, 66 Chaffey Street, Providence, Rhode Island, 02909, dated April 28, 2020, submitting a utility easement through a small portion of the northwest corner of Riverside Park. And that should also go.
To Public Works.
To Public Works.
To Public Works. Okay, refer to Public Works.
Thank you, Madam President. Communications and Reports, item 19, communication from Jeffrey Dana, City Solicitor, dated April 27, 2020, submitting the annual report on civil suits and legal proceedings pursuant to Section 2-98 of the Code of Ordinances.
Received.
Madam President?
Aye.
Point of personal expression?
Councilman Narducci.
Thank you. It appears that we're having some issues with the mailing going on. I had a conversation this afternoon with Sean and Sherry. David, I know for a fact Sean has spoken to the mailroom in the past. Like, say, for instance, tonight, I have no docket. I'm working off a phone that I can barely see the writing on. Now, I know for a fact I'll receive my docket either tomorrow, Saturday. I know Sean, I'm sorry, I know the clerk is going to have another conversation with the mailroom, but maybe it's something that we, as the leadership, or you as the president, or should also have a conversation with them to make sure this is. I don't know anybody else, but it happens to me every meeting. I always end up getting my mail the day after the meetings. Thank you.
Thank you for bringing that to my attention, Councilman. I'll make sure we talk about this offline.
Thank you, Madam.
Mr. Clerk?
Item 20, communication from his honor, the mayor, dated April 29, 2020, submitting his budget address, Providence, FY21, budgeting for a healthy and resilient city.
Received.
Is that perfect budget? I said, is that that perfect?
Leader Ryan?
Thank you, Madam President. Motion to suspend Rule 16B of the Rules of the City Council in order to take matters not appearing on the printed docket.
Second that motion, Madam President.
Motion has been made on second to suspend the Rule 16B of the Providence City Council in order to take an item, a matter that didn't appear on the printed docket. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Do I have it? Mr. Clerk?
Item 21, Council President Matos, an ordinance adopting the CARES Act grant budget and authorizing the Department of Planning and Development to submit the CDBG-CV, ESG-CV, and HOPWA-CV budget and application to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development.
Refer to the Committee on Urban Development Renewal and Planning. Leader Ryan?
Madam President?
Councilman Correa?
Yes, if we could adjourn tonight's meeting in memory of Rose Lepre, the mom of Major Robert Lepre in the Providence Police Department. Rose Lepre was a lifelong resident of Lisbon Street in Ward 12, and she passed away this week, so if we can adjourn in her memory.
Well, thank you, Pro Tem. Before we adjourn, and I just want to ask, I would like to express my gratitude to the teachers. This week, we are celebrating Teacher Appreciation Week, and I don't know if any of you would like to say anything for the teachers before we move on.
I would. As a parent, as a graduate, I just want to say, I mean, during this pandemic, and the whole remote learning process has been a challenge, and I'm sure teachers are struggling to figure out how to meet all their students' needs, because we also know that they have various needs. But I think they have done such an exceptional job, and the level of influence. Just thinking about my daughter's teacher, Ms. Mendoza, and my son's teachers at Classical, and all the other teachers who've gone above and beyond from dropping off items at students' homes, dropping off food, checking in with the families. I just want to thank all of you for everything that you're doing. And I also want to remember one of my teachers from high school, who's been instrumental in just my life.
We lost audio, Councilwoman.
I can be very brief and say thank you.
We lost Councilwoman.
You lost her.
Did you hear me?
Everything up to your teacher.
What'd you say?
Everything up to your teacher.
Oh!
Mr. Sossia, who passed away years ago, and who was so instrumental, like this week just reminds me of his patience as well. And, you know, he loved being a teacher, and he was the person who actually introduced me to some of the literature that I love to read now, and some of our old, like Shakespearean literature. "A Fellow" is still one of my favorite pieces, and "Amidst the Most Nice Dreams." But just everything that he's done, but especially the teachers right now, who are working so hard to make sure that all of our students are learning, and then their needs are being met. So, thank you. And thank you to my children's teachers at, you know, Ms. Mendoza, at Vartan, all my son's teachers at Classical. I know it's tough, but I appreciate everything that you all are doing. And my teachers at MLK, Nathan Bishop, and Hope High School. Thank you. Emma Pleasance, bye.
Thank you.
Madam President, I just want to be, thank you.
Narducci?
I just want to be brief and say thank you to all our teachers in the house.
Thank you. Thank you so much. With that, I entertain the motion to adjourn. Leader Ryan, do you have the motion to adjourn, or to, Pro Tem?
I cannot hear you, Leader Ryan. Can you hear me now?
Okay, now, yes.
I have another request of our colleagues to adjourn tonight's meeting, so maybe we could adjourn tonight's meeting in the memory of Rose Lepre at the request of Pro Tem Correa, but also Councilman Taylor has requested that we adjourn this evening in memory of Mike Dino, Michael Dino Mike McLaughlin. He's a son of Providence. Apparently, he used to light the Fourth of July fireworks in Providence each year, henceforth the name. He passed away on Wednesday, and at this point, I'd like to extend to the families of Rose Lepre and Dino Mike. To family and friends, the condolences, the deepest condolences to the City Council.
Second that motion to adjourn, Madam President.
Thank you. The motion has been made on second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
You will.
We're adjourned. Thank you.
You all.
Thank you.
Thank you.